Good evening. I'd like to call this evening's City of Uniontown regular city council meeting to order, April 6th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Rule call.
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Buzowski?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gerke?
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with a ruling of justice for all.
An executive session was held today, April 6th, at 4:30 for Personnel Matters. Before we get to comments on agenda items, I have a few things to announce. Number one, we're going to have a ribbon cutting at Bailey Park on Saturday at 2:00. That'd be this coming Saturday, April 8th, and it's for the batting cages that the boosters and other community people put up. So if you get a chance, stop down to Bailey Park and see the batting cage and just look around to see what has taken place there. We're playing, Union Town Baseball's team is playing their home games. I think every game that is scheduled this year is at night under the lights. I was down Monday night to watch, and there was a lot of people there, and people were really excited what's going on in Bailey Park, including myself. This morning, I had the pleasure of stopping down to see Mr. Terry Vassar at his new facility. It's called One Voice One Community on, at 111 East Fayette Street in Union Town. It's across from the Marathon Station where the old liquor store is. He's got a lot of nice things going down, going on down there. After-day care program that's going to be starting later in the year. But if you get a chance, Terry asked me to ask everyone to stop down just to say hello at 111 East Fayette Street down on, down across from the Marathon Station. And I had asked Terry to maybe come give us a presentation here in a month or so to explain more in depth of what he's doing, what he has planned for the community. I think it's a very positive facility that he, he and Aaron Zobrod has partnered to do this. So if you get a chance, stop down and see Terry and just, just say hello and give him your support. One other thing I have, we have a number of boards here in the city, and there's a lot of vacancies available. I'll just go over them real quick. But if you have an interest in any of these boards, please take your letter of interest into the, into Kim's office, and she'll take that, and then we'll go over them. The Appeals Board, there's one position available now, and at the end of the year, there'll be another one. The Zoning Hearing Board, there's one now, and two at the end of June, there'll be two more available. The Planning Commission Board, there's five expired terms now, so we're looking for five members there. International Property Maintenance Board, three terms have expired. We're looking for three members, of course. Redevelopment Authority, there's one expired term, and one will expire at the end of June of this year. And the Union Town Downtown Business District Authority, there's two that have expired now, and one at the end of the year will expire. Civil Service Board, and there's one that will expire at the end of the year. So if you have some interests, please drop your letter off at the, at the, in the mayor's office. And that's all I have. Thank you. Comments on agenda items only? No comments on agenda items? That's all I have. Thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to receive the report of the treasure for the month of March 2023, be in the same as hereby received and filed. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, Council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town for March 2023 invoices. In the general fund, forty thousand eighty-eight dollars and forty cents. Sewer fund, nineteen thousand four hundred and three dollars and three cents. Recreation, seven hundred and ten dollars and seventy-nine cents. Highway, twelve thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Off-street, one thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Recycling, four thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Library, thirty thousand. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
I'd just like to thank all the departments for doing what they can to keep our spending low. This is another month where, you know, forty thousand dollars out of the general, that's, that's, that's a really low number. So I'd just like to pass off to all, all of our people in the city. Thank you. And that's going to be, yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to reappoint the following members of the Board of Directors of the Union Town Public Library. Jane Balling, term to expire April 6th, 2026. W. Lawrence Bush, term to expire April 6th, 2026. And Corinne Purcell, term to expire April 6th, 2026. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, and I would like to thank these three people for being on that board. Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Just like this board, it's great to have people that want to do this and that are willing to stay. This is great timing right now. I encourage everyone to, if you're even slightly interested in any of the other boards, please send in your letter of interest. We can use every person in the city that is willing to do this to help. So, yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept a proposal from Joe Walkus for grass cutting services for city parks beginning March 27th, 2023 through October, 2023. City parks included Bailey Park, Sheepskin Trail, Grand Street Park, Marshall Park, Mill Street Park, which is Colwick, Union Town Cemetery, Fireman's Statue, Kensington Island, 911 Lot, Five Corners, City Hall, Penn Street Garage, Fountain, Church Street Parking Garage. Terms of service will be for removal of trash, tree limbs, or any debris in grass areas to be mowed along with cutting, trimming, and leaf removal of 12 properties weekly, or as needed, at a cost of seventeen thousand three hundred and forty dollars, paid bi-weekly for 14 weeks at a bi-weekly payment of twelve thirty-eight fifty-seven crores.
I'd just like to further break this down. We have 12 properties going to be cut total every week. You're looking at 48 cuts a month, 384 cuts for the season, and that breaks down to forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents a cut, which is a really great savings. This gentleman does a great job and, and the crew, and just, I'd like to say thank you to, to that crew, and thank you for coming in with this bid as well.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Same. Joe and his crew do an amazing job, so I'm grateful just to have him want to do it again. So, yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, Joe Walkus does an excellent job for us last year or previous years taking care of our properties. So, yes.
And Mayor Gerke?
I can say Joe Walkus does a wonderful job for the city, and I witness his work quite often, and I appreciate everything you do, Joe. Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the city's street and/or sanitary sewer crews to landscape along the Sheepskin Trail and fence at Bailey Park with topsoil, river rock, and grass deep in straw, and to also approve the purchase of material at an estimated cost of six thousand dollars. Mr. Buzowski?
It's looking amazing down there. So I would be honored to have our guys do that. So, yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve and adopt the job description for the positions of Playground Director and Director of Basketball Operations Director. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve accepting letters of interest for the part-time seasonal positions of Playground, Playground Directors and Basketball Programs Director. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, we're looking for a person to take care of the playground, playgrounds, and a separate person to take care of the basketball program, basketball coordinator. So that'd be two positions we're looking for. Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Do we have a, do we have a number of salary?
Well, we're going to base that on experience.
So that would be approved in the hiring motion when somebody would be hired.
Right, correct.
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, whereas Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of banners or signs within state rights of way. And whereas the Department of Transportation requires the City of Union Town to pass a resolution to authorize the placement of banners or signs and to set certain limits on said banner or sign. This particular resolution is for approval for a banner for the City of Union Town Farmers Market to be placed on Main Street. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of 300 t-shirts for the Summer Basketball League from Union Town Printing Press at a cost of two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Do we, do we need any other bids?
That's the only one that was submitted to me.
Come on, will we, will we have a touch, please? Will we have this out?
I think it was just a quote that was, Mr. John bought from the project company.
Shall we get a couple more bids? I'll, we'll get one bid on, on December. When, when, when is the program going to start? When do we need t-shirts?
I think it's, is it June 15th, Joe?
Yes.
I mean, we have time. We have hiring.
I'd like to make a motion to table this resolution. I'd like to try to get a couple more bids.
Is there a second? No second to table? I think I'm, was it being Mr. Billy for your?
Yeah, no. And the reason I'm voting no for this is because I feel that we should have had more of a bid. I'm not disagreeing with the company. It is a local company in Union Town. Just think it's better, a better use of taxpayer money.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize repairs to the 2011 Ford dump truck used on the Street Department for brake rotors, tie rod, and various other repairs from Burnsworth Garage in the amount of four thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents.
This is just to pass inspection. They're not going to let our truck leave the shop without it. So it's, it's not anything that's just regular maintenance. This is stuff that has to be done. So just wanted you to know.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of 111 Ford dump.
So every year, at the end of the year, we put a budget together for the ball in the year. It is a tight budget. It is a very tight budget, which also had a military increase built into it. And we have got to hold the line when we put a number on there. This is significantly above what is budgeted, although I do agree that it is needed. But from a, from an account and finance standpoint, I'm going to have to say no. And we're going to have to look further into seeing what, what we're going to have to do about these vehicles that we have that are going to have these continuing maintenance bills. And that's my point.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of parts for repair of the compost site bees machine from Flaveland Brothers in the amount of one thousand fifty-six dollars and sixty-six cents from the sewer fund.
Now, this is for the compost machine, the bees down there. This is going to be split between us and South Union as per our agreement with that. This is just maintenance, general maintenance, keep up on it. We have to replace the filters, and we are going to have, we're going to purchase them for this, and then we're also going to have one on hand for stock. There has been filters that have failed to pass, and when that thing goes down, it's not good. It, it, it really backs up a lot of problems. So we'll have just those parts on hand. And like I said, this is the total, and I believe, Kim, if I'm correct you if I'm wrong, but this is the total, and then we're still going to be splitting this amount?
Yes.
Okay. So just wanted to let anyone know that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve Captain Dave Brunch Rudder entering into the drop program plan effective July 1st, 2023. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve Captain Dave Brunch Rudder entering into the drop program plan effective July 1st, 2023. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, whereas under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 amended, the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development is authorized to extend financial assistance to communities for activities which will benefit low and moderate income families in the elimination or prevention of slums or blight or other urgent community development needs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, one, that the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town is hereby authorized to submit a revision request to PADCD for C-00073785 Recreation Improvement Lemon Street Park, which would remove the multi-year designation from the activity and add pavilion installation as phase two of the improvement. Two, that the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town is hereby authorized to submit a revision request to PADCD for C-0007532 Recreation Improvement Lemon Street Park, which would remove the multi-year designation from the activity. Three, that the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town is hereby authorized to submit a request for extension to the three-year activity completion deadline through December 31st, 2023 for C-000073785 Activities Recreation Improvement Lemon Street Park and Demolition. Four, that the mayor on behalf of Union Town City Council is authorized to execute all documents related to submission of the revision and extension request. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve a delegation of signing authority to delegate, delegate Kimberly Marshall, City Clerk, as the authorized signatory for the CDVG financial invoices and other fiscal-related documents. Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve an annual reevaluation for the CDVG programs FFY 2020 through 2021, Tier One Environmental Review Record for Housing Demolition. Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the use of decorative flag poles on Main Street to hang flags in memory of Emily Nicole Wilson, Be Kind to Others Day, in the City of Union Town from April 10, 2023 through May 10, 2023. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve a delegation of signing authority to delegate, delegate Kimberly Marshall, City Clerk, as the authorized signatory for the CDVG financial invoices and other fiscal-related documents. Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve an annual reevaluation for the CDVG programs FFY 2020 through 2021, Tier One Environmental Review Record for Housing Demolition. Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the use of decorative flag poles on Main Street to hang flags in memory of Emily Nicole Wilson, Be Kind to Others Day, in the City of Union Town from April 10, 2023 through May 10, 2023. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town that the City of Union Town has entered into an agreement by and between Union Town Sons of Italy Giuseppe Mazini Lodge 231 and the City of Union Town. Now therefore, in consideration of mutual promises, covenants, and conditions, the City of Union Town approves the Union Town Sons of Italy's application for a special occasion permit from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for the sale and consumption of liquor and/or malt or brewed beverages at the special event on the City of Union Town's downtown streets on Saturday, August 12th, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, August 13th, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, it should be a fun time, the Italian festivals.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of eight rear tires for the Fire Department Ladder Truck, Truck Number One, for a cost of up to four thousand seven hundred dollars. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Buzowski?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
That's all I have to do.
Okay. Monthly reports. Director of Development, Redevelopment Authority of the City of Union Town's monthly report, Ms. Crystal Simmons. Crystal's just come on board two weeks ago, I think it was. So I'd like to introduce Crystal to the city, and thank you for sharing your knowledge and time with us. Thank you so much. To the podium?
So I created this report to review the items that were on the agenda today, just briefly. And I want to bring attention to your second sheet. This is a new sheet that we will use to track the status of the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's a quick glance sheet, as I call it, and it identifies important milestones for the program, comments, how much funding is available, what the status of the project is, contract years, contract deadlines, without getting into actually explaining the sheet. That's basically an overview. But that's what we're reviewing on number one, and you can see that it starts with the oldest year of funding first, under 2019. 2018's not listed there, but 2015 through 2018 are complete closed projects. And over the next six months, I've been tasked with preparing for monitoring. So we have some summer help coming in to organize files and get the files presentable to DCED, and they've allowed us six months to do that. For 2019, today, we just did a revision and an extension to allow us to finish Lemon Street Park, which on your comments on the sheet you'll see, was just recently bid. That project was bid, and we are anticipating award in the next couple weeks, assuming we can reach a negotiable price. That allows us to do the first phase of the park, and the second phase would be the pavilion, which is on the second year of funding. So it breaks those apart because we had some deadlines to meet, and that's under the 2020 CV revision. So those are both those years' funding. Under 2020, the annual reevaluation that you approved tonight is going to allow us to continue with demolition over the city. So there's repository sales. We have plenty of properties that we're organizing right now to do full blight demolition, but environmentally, we have to make sure those things are covered. So that's what you did tonight. 2021 contracts are under review. I received the contract this week from DCED, and we're reviewing those activities, along with 2020 activities. These are activities that were placed with great intentions of completion, and sometimes that doesn't happen. And that's why we're granted the permission to modify funds over the next probably six or seven months. We'll be looking at projects to see how we're going to modify those. And in May, we will hold a hearing, late May or maybe early June, we will hold a hearing to accept public comment for any of the changes that we make, and also any new applications that we'll submit. Another thing I've done for the city to bring the CDVG program back to a lively, organized program is incorporated CDVG management meetings. Those meetings are bi-weekly, and in attendance is Kim Marshall, Shannon Wood, and myself. That's the City Clerk and Deputy City Clerk. During that review, which we've had one so far, we've organized a 10-step CDVG invoicing procedure to streamline the operations. Tonight, we did a delegation of signing authority to help expedite invoicing to the state. We've created a checks and balance that would allow drawdowns and checks to be clearly identified in that checks and balance. And we've also developed a payment request form that just helps, helps move that process along. That just goes on behind the scenes, and just kind of setting up that, that system for the city and the Redevelopment Authority to smoothly work together. And lastly, we've also scheduled a CDVG status meeting, a little different than the management meeting. Status meetings, in attendance is Mayor Gerke, Jared Billy's included in those conversations, Matt George, Chairman of RDA, Kim Marshall, and myself. And at those meetings, we use that as almost a steering committee. We keep those people, which is strategically attending, the Chairman of the RDA and someone from council that helps with a bit of a steering in between meetings of how we want to make changes to the program. And of course, we always present any of that to our Redevelopment Authority Board, which is open to the public as well. And that's everything I wanted to report. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Fire Department, Pastor?
Yeah. Union Town Fire Department responded to on the falling incidents for the month of March, 2023. Eight fire-related incidents, which included two building fires, three cooking fires confined to the stove, stove top, one smoke condition but no active fire, one passenger vehicle fire, and one trash fire. Twenty-four rescue-related incidents, with five being motor vehicle collisions with injuries, eleven motor vehicle collisions with no injuries, two collisions with persons entrapped, four removal of ill or injured victim from a building, one animal rescue, and one pedestrian struck by a vehicle. Twenty-three hazardous conditions incidents, including seven electrical emergencies, thirteen power lines down, one carbon monoxide incident, and one flammable liquid spill, and one structural collapse. Twelve service-related incidents, including seven lockout or gain. Twelve service-related incidents, including seven lockout or gain access incidents, three persons in distress incidents, one cover assignment for another fire company, and one water valve. One hazardous materials incidents, 20 fire alarm activations, 26 weather-related emergencies or issues, two witness fire drill in a public facility, which includes pre-incident planning and familiarization, and public employee fire safety training. Training conducted for the month, for this month. The department had a total of 173 man-hours of training taken or conducted by personnel for the month of March. A special training taken in March included an all-day symposium, VI live feed on lithium-ion batteries and fire and dangerous involving the, or dangers involving these. These batteries are very prevalent in numerous things these days, and can prevent a dangerous situation if they unite or have heat and fire impinging on them. Apparatus updates. Thank you for all the councils who supported the resolution to make the purchase for the tires for our ladder truck. I realize this is an expensive purchase, but we did the best to find a good quality tire at a decent price. I'm hoping these will last a few years. Apparatus testing that was approved by council, last meeting is being scheduled, and hopefully will take place in late spring or early summer. Thank you for your support last month of these resolutions to have the annual testing conducted. Miscellaneous, public service announcement to our citizens is to be aware of lithium-ion batteries in your home. Avoid overcharging them, keeping them stored in unused tools, storing them near heat sources, making any alterations to them or equipment they power, and dropping them or any other things that can be traumatic to the battery. Personnel have continued to be involved in community events, along with our outreach programs, public fire education, and pre-incident planning as well. Lastly, reminder of our weekly bingo fundraiser at the social hall every Thursday, starting at 6:45. Respectfully submitted, Scott A. Kahn, Chief.
Thank you.
Bingo.
Police Department, Chief DeWitt?
So March was a busy month for us. Before I get into the agenda or the comments that I have relative to our department, as everyone's aware, we've had, we had major storms in the month of March, two specifically, one where we were without power at our station for a period of almost, I believe, 24 hours. The residents of the city, visitors of the City Council should be extremely grateful for the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Street Department, the turnaround, the cleanup. My power, my station was out with without power for 24 hours. We were operating out of our department with lights when we needed to, flashlights, but we had secondary set up with the Fire Department when we were going to operate out of their building if we needed to. So we had a fallback point and actually made contact with Kim and Shannon and the Mayor about us setting a fallback point for the Police Department into this building, so we have continued operations with power that's secure. So good job to all those departments, including the HOS was in here for emergency management. I came into the Fire Department one time, I think I got to the Fire Department about 10 o'clock that night. Emergency management, emergency management was already on scene at the Fire Department running operations. So there's a giant unified command setup. So understand, there's a lot of working parts that the citizens don't get to see, and council you probably don't get to see, but when you have those major events, you know, we might be a bunch of independent agencies working separately, but when we need to, we work very tightly together to accomplish a one single mission. Also, March 29th, most people are probably aware, this is outside of our service area, but there was a school shooting threat that came into Laurel Highlands High School. Mayor Gerke was actually in my office for probably our, what, every other day meetings we typically have. We were actually covering the school shooting video I just showed him from Virginia, or I'm sorry, Tennessee. And watching that video, the call came into the station, the caller actually called into our station, called the active shooter, and there were people barricaded in the bathroom. So he got to kind of hear the call. We had a, we dumped every resource we had at Laurel Highlands High School. From the time that call was hung up to the time we had officers, our officers in the building first with a state trooper was a minute and 20 seconds. And we've been providing services also in addition to Uniontown High School to assist them when they have security issues. We're constantly putting people in their building when they need it and request it. So there's, there's been a lot of things going on that, you know, people don't get to see, but I'm proud of my guys, and I'm proud of the departments in this city for doing everything they can. So into my report, during the month of March, the Uniontown Police Department, in addition to all those other things, responded to 789 calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included 21 vehicle accidents, nine assaults, 22 welfare checks, 25 domestics, four assist fire calls, 11 disorderly conducts, 29 emergency medical assists, 11 assists to the police departments, six harassments, seven shots fired, 27 alarms, 79 suspicion person, activity, or vehicles, 10 thefts, two burglaries, burglaries, and 15 animal complaints. Again, that's a small excerpt of what we're really handling monthly at this point. Officers made a total of 43 criminal arrests, issued six non-traffic citations, and 47 traffic citations. We also conducted foot patrols and vehicle patrols of parks and trails as we have been. We've also been doing them in the parking garages because we're getting continual complaints of people using illicit drugs in the parking garages during select times of the day, so we're in the habit of running them off quite frequently now. During the month of March, code enforcement opened 33 new cases, closed 24 of those cases, and Officer Camper's carrying 11 of those cases over into March. As everyone is aware, if you've not seen, parking enforcement's now in full enforcement capacity within the city. Officer Parking Attendant, Officer, I'm not sure what to classify him as at this point, Dylan Bonner, he's going to continue to focus primarily on the downtown business district. However, spring is coming, so he's going to be using our electric bicycle to begin conducting parking on that as well, but he's going to, I'm going to have him stretching outside of the downtown business district onto our heavy traffic thoroughfare, such as North Mount Vernon, South Mount Vernon, places like that where we have a continued problem with people parking on sidewalks, and it's making it dangerous for pedestrians. So he will be doing that on the e-bike, which will give him the ability to cover much more ground because we can't have him on a police car driving, but we can put him on an e-bike. So things are moving along fairly well here and continue to keep it that way. Any questions from you? Thank you. Oh, sorry. In case no one else covers this, community cleanups on April 22nd. That's where we clean up all the trash in the city. I know Buck's going to have a guy out there with truck and trailer, I'm assuming?
I'm on vacation.
Oh, lucky you this year. So that'll be me and Fred will be doing it. Maybe I can, maybe I can get Hillary wrapped up in it. So 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The rally points at 8:45 on North Gallatin Avenue, next to the church across from Maple Garden Apartments. Make your city a better place, start by cleaning it up, folks. I'll be there.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Public Works, Steve?
Yeah. Johnny couldn't make it this evening. We've had a sewer break on Dunlap Street. The guys worked endless hours and tirelessly with the shorthanded they are, and we had to get more equipment brought in because ours wasn't big enough. It was, ended up being a 40-foot long ditch by the entire width of the one lane of road and about 15 foot deep. They did repair a eight-inch sewer ring, and it's going to need some additional work, but their repair they did, it was fantastic, and it's held well. And so I'm proud of my guys for sticking out there and doing it, especially being as shorthanded as they are. Everyone was involved, everyone got in there and got it done. They are still working on trying to pull the tracks, so it's just been kind of stretched a little thin, but they're doing what they can do, and we should be getting our street sweep brought again soon. So just kind of bear with us a little bit. We're shorthanded, like I said, again and again, but we're doing everything we can with who we have and what we have. That's all I got for now.
Very good. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
This is time for public comment. Before we get started, I'm sure everyone has observed the rules that we have posted on. Each door here, council chambers, I'd like for you to adhere to. All those rules make things go smooth. At this time, any, do we have any public comment? State your name and your address.
Robert Hall, 6 West Island Avenue, City of Uniontown. I have a concern about what City Council just passed on 88 approval application, essentially permit to sell alcohol. I'm a little confused what that term alcohol means. Does it mean hard liquor, wine and beer? Does it mean wine and beer, or does it just mean beer?
So I, typically these events that we've done historically in the city, especially with the Italian festival, is primarily wine and beer only, no liquor. And also in further discussion that we're going to have here as we get closer to the event, there's going to be a designated area. This is not going to be something that you're going to be able to go up and down the city. There will be an area, and we're going to have further conversations with that as well. It's not going to be something that is just going to be an open container in the city. And the biggest thing is this is, it is a family-friendly event. And anytime that you advertise, or you're going to perform, or put on a family-oriented event, it doesn't include the alcohol. So I'm very big on making sure that, that we have a strict area and we keep the alcohol away from the flow of the event. I don't want to see open containers up and down the street of Uniontown.
Is there going to be any control of the limit that they can consume?
It's in the agreement that we already have with them, and they're in.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just looking out for you, Chief.
I appreciate that. I agree that I've been in contact with kind of members from some of the leadership, they ask for, you know, what types of security. This group is thinking in advance, they're trying to take care of problems way whatever they have. So kudos to them for thinking ahead. I'm sure they've already, I can speak for them, know what everything that's going on. I can almost guarantee just that they are proofreading enough things that may be interested as it gets closer. And I think too, you have to, you have to say, the City of Uniontown does not hold a liquor license with the state. This is an off-site permit, it's coming from them, so, and, you know, even at the club, you know, the state through the LCE heavily enforces their laws. And so they take a huge jeopardy in risking their license when doing these events. So I am in full confidence that when they're operating, it's going to be operating in that light. We've done these before, and the event coordinator would have to go to a third party to get this liquor license. This, it does not have to happen, it's not happening this way. And I'm bringing it back to the Italian, the Sons of Italy is what, it should never fear from it, but this is, they're going to be a proper event.
I'm sure that helps ease the communities.
I, I think so as well, and I think it's very important.
Because they said alcohol.
Absolutely.
And that's what.
Oh, it is a very important question, it's a very important topic to raise when, because we don't ever want to give that appearance that the city's involved in that. That's not, that's not what it is. The city merely is a venue, and, you know, it's, it's in being that this group has to safeguard their license and it's not third-party, I feel much more secure with this agreement this year than we had in previous years with the festival.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Hall. I live at 73 Evergreen Terrace, which is on the corner of Beer Lane and Evergreen Terrace. And I'd like to publicly commend and thank the Uniontown Fire Department, the Uniontown Police Department, and one of your contractors, Professional Auto. Sunday night around 10 o'clock, I heard a crash. About seven seconds later, I heard a boom. I walked out my side door, looked to my right, saw a car sitting in my yard. There had been an accident on the top of the hill where a car rear-ended another car that was parked on Beer Lane facing down the hill. Broke loose, the car that got hit broke loose, came down the street, crossed the street, went through my neighbor's hedges up above me. I have an eight-foot stone wall, retaining wall that holds back his property. The car went airborne, nosedived into my yard, was standing perpendicular, and then fell back against my eight-foot wall. Needless to say, nobody was hurt in that accident, other than, I don't know what damage the first driver was when he hit the car up on top of the hill. I was on the phone with 911, and the lady said to me, is this a two-car accident? Because prior to that, about an hour before that, I guess they had one on Charles Street when they took out a part of a porch, somebody else. So I can honestly say this, that within one minute, we had one of our police department on foot, who was there. We then had, within two minutes, I'm not going to say who it was, within two minutes, I had three other police cars, two fire trucks, and an ambulance. It was phenomenal. I mean, they were there within a very, very short period of time. And I want to give you a heartfelt thanks for the city. I mean, when my fiancee and I bought a house, I said, we will buy it somewhere where we have a paid fire department and a paid police department. And every time I get my taxes, I complain, but I still have a fire department and a police department that is paid, and I really do appreciate it. And I just want to thank City Council, but I wanted to come and thank Chief DeWitt and his department, and Chief Kahn's not here tonight, and I want to thank him and his department. But they were fantastic. The next day, the towing company had to actually get a crane to bring in, raise it up, and I have pictures of a car 30-some feet in the air coming out of my yard and being put, but it was a phenomenal job. But thankfully, also, nobody was hurt, so, and very little damage to my property, thank God. So again, thank you much, Chief, appreciate it.
Sir, I want to thank you, there's so much negativity out there right now, just to hear somebody come in and give praise like that, that's a definite role to take. We really appreciate it.
Very, very.
I was going to start out by saying, you know, I want to complain about something.
So these guys really, I'm sure they appreciate it as well. Thank you.
I appreciate it, really do.
I want to concur, Mr. Hall, of what Mr. Bisaki said. It's nice to have someone come and commend our good fire department and our good police department, and they do that for everyone, so.
Well, I'll take donations.
Thanks for the kind words. Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, the council adjourned to meet Thursday, May 4, 2023, at 5:00 a.m. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Bisaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.
Mr. Rep?